All right, we are here to call to order the zoning commission meeting of January fourteenth, two thousand and twenty five, to hear the rezoning case Z O N dash twenty four dash zero nine at thirty eight twelve East Powell Road. Can we have roll?
Mr. McNulty.
Here.
Ms. Foster.
Here.
Ms. Trevellus.
Here.
Mr. Avanunua.
Yes.
Mr. Pierce.
Yes, here.
Thank you. So what I would like to do is first we'll have Robin Duffy present the staff report, and then usually I have the applicant speak, and then after the applicant speaks, we will open the forum to comments from the public. So if you could please refrain from commenting until everybody gets a chance, that would be great because it's going to be a long night, or has the potential to be a long night.
Yes.
Thank you. So, Robin, if you please.
Thank you, Ms. Trevellus, and I'll remind everyone, including the commission and myself, and applicant, anyone wishing to speak tonight, please come up to the podium, speak clearly into the microphone in front of you so that we can all hear you.
Name and address.
We are here for rezoning case Z O N dash twenty four dash zero nine for property located at thirty eight twelve East Powell Road and also at thirty seven eight four, thirty seven ninety East Powell Road. There are two parcels in question totaling one point four eight eight acres. The applicant is Ohio Patient Access LLC. The property is currently owned by Early Childhood Education LLC. The current zoning is the planned commercial and office district. The applicant is requesting to amend the currently effective planned commercial and office district development plan to allow for the operation of a marijuana dispensary and to allow for commercial and office uses on the site. The property was originally rezoned to P C D in two thousand and eight. Development plan currently in place allowed for the operation of a daycare on the property, but no other uses are currently permitted. In terms of the Orange Township Comprehensive Plan, the site is located in subarea three in the two thousand and eighteen Orange Township Comprehensive Land Use Plan, recommendation three dash six reads that remainder areas recommend land use consistent with the existing zoning. In terms of the surrounding area, it's bordered on three sides by the city of Columbus, to the north, to the south, to the east, or excuse me, north, south, and to the west, and also by Worthington Road to the south, and then the east is East Powell Road.
Can you speak up?
I will do my best. On the following page of the staff report, you can see the aerial of the parcels there, Eric, if you can scroll down. So those are the two parcels in question, and underneath is the development plan proposed by the applicant for the two existing buildings on the site. In terms of review of the applicant's amendment request, I'll start off by giving some background on marijuana's legal status in Orange Township. On July twenty four, two thousand and twenty four, the Orange Township Board of Trustees passed Resolution two four two two eight, which amended and restated a previous resolution that prohibited cannabis dispensaries in the township. Resolution two four dash two two eight permits up to two retail dispensaries in Orange Township for medical or adult-use cannabis. Resolution also states that for the purposes of the zoning resolution, a dispensary shall be considered a retail or commercial use. The Ohio Division of Cannabis Control requires that the local zoning authority, which is the township, sign a ten B form for a proposed dispensary, which indicates that the zoning for a given location either permits a cannabis dispensary or could be amended to permit a cannabis dispensary. Orange Township has signed off on a ten B form for a dispensary at this location, indicating that a dispensary could be located on the subject property, provided the zoning is approved. So, the applicant is proposing a development plan which would allow one of the existing buildings marked as building A to be used as a marijuana dispensary. Because the previous development plan specified that the buildings on the property were to be used for childcare and educational purposes, the development plan must be amended to establish other uses as permitted. Building B is proposed to permit a commercial and office establishment developed and maintained in accordance with the approved development plan. A potential building C, which was permitted under the previous development plan but never constructed, is also proposed to be allowed with commercial and office uses permitted. Again, two buildings exist on the site currently, and one is proposed, although no timeframe is proposed for the development of the building C. Old East Powell Road is a Class D road per the Orange Township zoning resolution on the planned commercial district. This triggers a building setback of fifty feet from East Powell Road right-of-way. Existing buildings A and B do comply with this setback. However, the potential building C, if it were to be built and to match the building line of building A, it would encroach two feet upon this setback, which would be a setback of forty-eight feet due to the angle of the right-of-way. A divergence would be requested and required from the setback for the potential building C. Planned commercial and office district does not have standard side or rear yard setbacks. However, section twenty-one point ten of the Orange Township zoning resolution states that non-residential buildings or uses, except for parking, shall not be located nor conducted closer than one hundred feet to any lot line of a residential district. Because the surrounding parcels located within the city of Columbus are zoned in a residential zone, we believe this does trigger that provision. As such, the applicant has requested three divergences from this provision for building V, which is set back thirty feet from the residential lot line, as well as a divergence for potential building C, which would be located twenty-five feet from the residential lot line, and the three small structures associated with the cell tower on parcel two, which are roughly two feet from the residential lot line. The maximum building height is proposed to be thirty-six point seven feet from the finished grade. Each building is proposed to contain six thousand six hundred and forty-eight square feet, and the maximum lot coverage is seventy-five percent, which is standard in the P C district. As for parking, a total of fifty-nine parking spaces currently exist on the site. The dispensary as a retail use would require twenty-two spaces based on the requirements of the zoning code and the square footage of the buildings. This would leave thirty-seven extra spaces for future use. The applicant has proposed that the attached site plan would control in the event of a discrepancy between the site plan and the requirements of the Orange Township zoning resolution. In theory, this could result in fewer parking spaces than required per current code, depending on the future uses of buildings A, B, and C if they were all to be occupied. Additionally, the existing parking spaces on the site are nine by eighteen feet, which is less than the requirements in the zoning resolution, which requires that parking spaces be at least nine by twenty feet. The applicant has requested divergence from this provision. For landscaping, the applicant is not proposing any new landscape plantings. However, seven existing trees on the property would remain, as would eight existing trees that appear to be located just across the property line on the neighboring property. Those would remain. For lighting, both wall-mounted and pole-mounted lighting fixtures are proposed. However, the lighting plan provided made it difficult to tell how many fixtures were proposed and also how many are currently existing. Additionally, many of the foot candle levels shown on the lighting plan were illegible, at least to me, making it impossible to tell if they comply with the requirements of the zoning resolution. The applicant has proposed language that states in the event of a discrepancy between the requirements of the zoning resolution and the attached lighting plan, the attached lighting plan shall control. We do have concerns about this provision, given the eligibility of the lighting plan. For signage, the applicant has included a signage plan that proposes that the existing monument-style sign on the property would be refaced with a total display area of sixteen square feet. Additionally, one wall-mounted sign is proposed for building A, which would be a total of thirty-six point zero nine square feet. We do note that while it appears to comply with the fifteen-foot height requirement for wall-mounted signs in the township, a height measurement from finished grade to the top of the sign was not provided. If the top of the sign were to be greater than the fifteen feet from the finished grade, a divergence would be required from this provision. The applicant is also proposing up to four no-loitering signs, each of which may be no more than two square feet, must be in neutral colors, and shall not require permits. The application also notes that any other signage required by the Ohio Department of Cannabis Control would be exempt from the requirements of the zoning resolution. In terms of procedure, the applicant has proposed language that variations from the proposed development standards by up to ten percent may be permitted by a waiver from the zoning inspector. After consulting with legal counsel, we do recommend that the applicant remove this provision as it is outside the typical procedures for amendments of planned districts in Orange Township. Which brings us to divergences. There are a total of nine requested. A divergence from twenty-one point zero nine to permit a setback for potential building C from the east Old Powell Road right-of-way for forty-eight feet instead of the required fifty feet. Divergence from section twenty-one point ten to reduce the setback for building B to thirty feet from the property line, to reduce the setback for the existing utility structures to two feet from the property line, to reduce the setback for the potential building C to twenty-five feet from the property line, and to waive the landscaping or screening requirement for that area as would otherwise be required by the zoning resolution. Divergence from section twenty-one point twelve, the request is in the event of a discrepancy between the lighting plan and the requirements of the zoning resolution, the lighting plan proposed would control. A divergence from twenty-one point zero one, parking spaces to be at nine feet by eighteen feet instead of nine feet by twenty feet. Divergence from Article twenty-two, generally speaking, to allow up to four no-loitering signs without a permit, and to allow any other state-required signage to be exempt from the requirements of Article twenty-two of the zoning code, which deals with signage, and the final divergence from fourteen point zero six, to allow future proposed uses to be established without rezoning if they meet the definition of commercial and office establishments of all types developed and maintained in accordance with the approved development plan, and to allow variations from the development standards by up to ten percent with a waiver from the zoning inspector. In terms of additional staff comments, we, as a use-based amendment to the planned district with no additional construction proposed at this time, the Delaware County Regional Planning Commission did not review this application. As noted above, we are concerned with the language regarding the lighting plan. Staff recommends that the applicant either remove the language stating that the lighting plan shall control, or resubmit an updated lighting plan that clearly shows the fixtures and foot candle levels throughout the site and onto neighboring properties as well. We also have some concerns that language regarding future uses is too vague, that being commercial and office establishments of all types, that the applicant should either include a list of expressly permitted uses or a list of prohibited uses. I did provide some examples of typical prohibited uses in this district. And then after consulting with legal counsel, we do recommend that the applicant remove the language regarding administrative waiver for the development standards. As for our staff recommendation, we do recognize and respect that some may find the operation of a cannabis dispensary to be an objectionable use. However, per Resolution twenty-four dash two two eight of the Orange Township Board of Trustees, a cannabis dispensary is to be considered a retail use for purposes of the zoning resolution, and a general retail use is not inappropriate for this location, as it is largely away from established residential neighborhoods and is located near a commercial area, albeit one in another jurisdiction. We do have some concerns with some of the provisions proposed by the applicant, primarily those concerning future uses and lighting regulation, but we believe that these can be addressed with minor revisions to the plan. As such, we do recommend approval with modifications to the zoning commission, subject to the modifications that I mentioned earlier at the discretion of the commission. That is all staff has at this time. I believe the applicant is present and has a presentation for you all. I am on hand if you have any questions.
Question for you, Robin.
Yes.
Is regional planning still going to hear this or see this?
No, because it's a use-based amendment, those typically do not go to R P C.
Okay.
Thank you.
Even when there is a building C constructed?
It's, there's no hard and fast rules for it, but typically for a minor amendment, because building C was already approved in the previous development plan, it's not major new construction, so it typically does not go before R P C.
Okay. Do we have any other questions for Robin at this time?
No.
All right. Thank you. At this point, if the applicant would like to get up and present their proposal for the site, and I don't know if you have any graphics that go with your presentation?
Yes, I think Robin.
There we go. Thank you, Eric.
So thank you for allowing us to come speak to you tonight. My name is Greg Gerosby. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Ice Miller, and I'm here representing the applicant, Ohio Patient Access, which is doing business as Ascend Wellness Holdings. I have a couple of representatives of Ohio Patient Access and Ascend with me. Why don't you go ahead and introduce yourselves from the seats?
I'm Kathleen O'Lostrough, and I'm a retail owner.
I'm Eric Kmetz. I'm the owner of the business.
All right. And I'll remind people that when they come up to the podium to speak, name and address for the public.
Sure. Great.
For future commentators.
Great. And it's Greg Gerosby. My address is six six seven Park Edge Drive, Gehanna, Ohio.
Thank you.
So, we prepared a short presentation here, and we'll be presenting different parts of us. You won't be hearing too much from me. We'll let the business people do all the talking. But I did want to point out just a few things. This is an application for rezoning. We accept the reading that Robin put into the record with respect to the status of the, of the application and, and, you know, what brings us here today. There are, as Robin said, two existing buildings on this property and a third building that's was previously proposed and approved under the former development plan. Our idea is not to really change anything about that building or change the physical, the outside physical plants of the two existing buildings. Those are going to remain very much like they are today, with the addition of some signage and, you know, fix up some paint a little bit, but not much is being done to the exterior of these buildings. Eric, if you want to get up and talk a little bit about the process that took us here?
Sure.
Hello again. My name is Eric Kmetz. My address is seventy-seven twenty Campus Lane. That's in Montgomery, Ohio. So I, I'm down in Cincinnati, and that's four five two four two. So I had the pleasure of driving up through a bit of snow and traffic this evening. I want to thank you for allowing me to come up and speak tonight, and I appreciate everyone who's coming, whether it's for or against. I always think it's good to have a vocal community. I live in a vocal community down in Montgomery, and I always appreciate attending these as a, as a resident. This process started for me back in July, maybe even sooner than that. I own several dispensaries in Ohio right now. I've got one in Pickwa that's operating. I have one in Sandusky that's been operating for about a year, and I have one down in Cincinnati that's also been operating for about a year. The way the process works in Ohio, this past year, when dispensaries, when the state went from medical to recreational, I don't know how many people know this, but the way they issued licenses for dispensaries was everyone who had a standalone dispensary, meaning if you did not have a processor or a cultivation site connected with your dispensary, you got another opportunity to open another dispensary. And with that, I was given the opportunity to open three more, and they give you lottery balls in the state, and then they draw those balls, and you get rank ordered from one to one hundred and fifty, and that determines the order in which you'll be allowed to select your property sites. So that started a mass search around Ohio for properties. I was very interested in this area. My wife's family lives right down the road in Liberty Township. My in-laws are here, two of her sisters and their families are here. So I'm in this community frequently. There was a moratorium for the longest time in Orange Township, and then when the state went to rec, and fifty-eight percent of the residents in this community voted to approve recreational marijuana. At that time, Orange Township lifted its moratorium. As stated, that, that was in July. I was here at that meeting when the moratorium was lifted and the new rules were issued to allow for two dispensaries in this, in this township. At that time, I spoke about thirty-eight twelve East Powell because I was looking at this site, and I thought for many reasons why it would be an ideal site for a marijuana dispensary. As people may or may not know, it's difficult to locate a site for marijuana dispensary. There are Ohio rules that prohibit you from being within five hundred feet. So these are state protections for the citizens that live in these areas. You must be five hundred feet away from a school, five hundred feet away from a park, from a playground, from a church. That limits, as you might imagine, there's lots of churches, lots of daycares. You know, I go to church on Sunday. I send my kids to daycare. They're all over the state. This site is away, five, more than five hundred feet away from all those prohibited facilities. There are residential houses, but not immediately next to this site. If you stand on the road and look at this site, you would not see residential houses around it. Yet, it is quite convenient to many people in the community that seek out cannabis for medicinal reasons and even for recreational reasons now. The state also puts limits on signage, so this isn't like we're going to have big, bright lights, and you'll hear that from our operator soon, advertising that marijuana is sold here. And in fact, I talked to people that live in areas where I have my other three dispensaries, and many times, they're unsure that I even had a dispensary there. This is, these businesses are often driven right past, and unless you are looking for it, and unless you know what you are looking for, you often do not see these businesses. And that is thanks in large part to the prohibitions that the state has on what we can do for signage and what we can do for advertising and marketing. You're not going to see this cannabis dispensary advertised or marketed on billboards. It's not going to be in your local newspaper. There are limits and restrictions on how we can market and how we can advertise. As stated, we're going to have no loitering signs up. You'll find during the presentation that Kathleen's going to give, that these are highly secured facilities. We have, the state has lighting requirements that require us to light the whole parking lot. We have security. Oftentimes, communities that initially are apprehensive to us coming in, Pickwa and Sandusky are two great examples. We're the first dispensary in both of those communities. And after we've been in there, many residents and the community itself has, has been thankful that we are there. It, it does provide a level of security and protection. I will stop there only because, lastly, I wanted to mention that this is on a cul-de-sac road. It's secluded. It's the only business on this cul-de-sac road. And all that being said, we, we do want to be respectful of the community. We don't want to build a giant, bright lights, hey, come buy marijuana. We understand that there are residents that live here. I'm going to turn it over. What we typically do is we hire an operator, professional operator, and in this case, we've, we've hired Ascend to operate the dispensary for us. So I'm going to turn it over to Ascend to let you know a little bit about what this building might look like on the outside, the inside, and how some of the operations might go down.
Before you sit down, can I just ask you a couple of questions, just real quick? In, you're down in Cincinnati, somewhere you have a facility. Is it in Montgomery?
No, it's not. Montgomery, where I live right now has a moratorium.
Okay.
I've been talking with the trustees there to try to, to see if that could be lifted as well, but it is in downtown Cincinnati.
Okay. And then the other question is, and I don't know what Liberty story is, but did you attempt to put anything in Liberty? but did you attempt to put anything in Liberty? I think you said your wife's family and so forth. You've got people in the community.
Yeah, no, we do not have one in Liberty Township.
Okay. Did you seek that out? I don't know what their thought is. Just curious whether or not you looked at any opportunities there as well.
Sure. No, they have a moratorium at the moment, so it wouldn't be possible.
All right. Thanks.
Hello. I'm Kathleen Olivas-Tiro. I live at 1906 Chesterfield Bridge Circle, and that's Chesterfield, Missouri, 63017. So, I've been with Ascend over five years, almost six years. I joined Ascend in Missouri, or, pardon me?
Speak up.
Oh, I'm sorry. I think you put it up too high. Sorry. Okay. And I'm used to like going both ways. But anyway, is this better? Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. So, I've been with Ascend almost six years. It'll be six years July 1st. My first position was with Illinois Stores when we had medical dispensaries. I had zero experience with cannabis, so I had a lot to learn. I spent my first six months just understanding the product, how the dispensaries ran, and the talent in working with the teams. In January, Illinois legalized as Ohio did January 2020, and so then I began to work with Ascend through adult use, partnered with the medical patient business as well. I'm here to talk about Ascend in general and our footprint. I don't know if they'll automatically go to...
One more.
There. Okay. The map's a little off. The map left Pennsylvania and Maryland off. But we operate in seven states. We have 39 operating dispensaries: Ohio, Illinois, New Jersey, Pennsylvania, Massachusetts, Maryland, and Michigan. And as you know, we're operating in five of the Ohio locations, as Eric called out. Initially, about five years ago, I oversaw our location in Carroll, Ohio, as a medical facility, and then we acquired, a year later, we acquired our Kishakton location. On the next page, I can, there's a visual. I can talk to our experience. So, in all locations, our effort is to create a world-class customer experience. My contribution to that is ensuring that we're hiring strong talent, people that can, provide a great customer experience. The building itself is very similar to the ones that you see. They all pretty much look the same. And then, we make sure, we work very closely with the consumer, the medical patient, and our teams, to be sure that we're curating our product for the consumer, so that we're putting the products in the building that they're looking for. We protect a medical menu as well, so any medical patient will always be able to receive their medicine. All right. As far as jobs to the township, it is budgeted that this location would have 35 employees. There would be about nine people per shift. There's senior management, a general manager, and then there would be an assistant general manager. Those are the salary positions. There's a care specialist, a patient consultant on staff. We usually have about five of them on the schedule. There is like an inventory team, data analysis. There's security on staff from the time that we open until the time that we close. If we need them longer, they'll stay longer. There's, of course, administration or retail associates, and then we have a purchaser that works with the consumers and things like that, and they will purchase the product from the other cultivation sites. This purchasing is done in partnership with logistics, so we make sure we're getting the right product and that the product is fresh. And then, it's done through local phone calls to the cultivators in Ohio. All product that we sell is from Ohio. We do provide nice benefits with employees, which is insurance, discounts. We have opportunities to participate in FSA or HSA. We start our employees off at $18 an hour, and our general managers typically earn between $90,000 to $100,000 a year. There is a bonus program in place for all the management associates, and then we do typical, like, contests and incentives. I just came from Cincinnati also. I drive slower. When I was in there with that team, they had really rallied together to make sure that, you know, they had enough folks to serve the consumer when the first snowstorm hit. I was buying all of them, like, different coats and stuff like that, just as a thank you for what they had done. On this dispensary site, the facility size would be 4,000 square feet. Our proposed hours would be 9 to 9. It's typical what we do for adult use locations. The, I think Eric spoke to the directions and the site circulation. I will speak a little bit to deliveries. When we receive product, they're all in protected, it's in protected vans, security vans. The delivery drivers would go around to the back of the building. We have secured gates. They notify the team, and then there is a security person on staff along with the logistics and inventory team. They open the gate. The truck drives in. They close the gate. They lock the gate. They, the driver and the person that he is with will unload into the dispensary. The doors are locked, and then the team begins to accept the product. All pieces are counted. There's a manifest that goes to the state, as well as we keep our records. There's two systems. One is metric and one is DUCI, that we use to monitor to make sure that all product is accounted for. And then, just on, as far as inventory, we do inventory every single night. So, these buildings can account for every piece of product in their, in their building. If there's anything missing, even if it's a small unit like a tincture, we research through cameras and from our POS systems to find out exactly what happened to that product, and then we account for that product. There's going to be 59 parking spaces. 70% of the, of our business is done online, meaning many folks are work professionals, or they may order it. They'll stop by on their way home from work. When they come in, we have an estate, it isn't issued by the state but approved by the state. I've purchased them. It's an electronic ID check. They scan the barcode. I want to say similar to TSA, but I know they've gotten very, very, theirs are a little bit more, they pull up pictures now. So, but we scan the ID. We make sure the, it verifies 21 years old. It verifies as to, as much as it possibly can, that the ID is a legal ID. And then, we also have booklets that we get from each state. If there's any questions, it kind of tells them what to look for, what the emblem is and things like that for Ohio. The customer comes in, we scan their ID. They're welcomed into the dispensary. We scan their QR code from the order that they placed, and they go right to the POS, and there are products there waiting for them, and then they exit. If they don't have an order placed, we do have kiosk on site, and they can place an order at the kiosk with the assistance of an associate. And then, dispensary floor plan. I can see you looking at that, so there may be some questions regarding that. The green is where the, where the customer will check in. The yellow is the dispensary floor, and then the red, of course, is the restricted area. Everything is protected with a swipe card. So, in order to be an employee, you have a swipe card. If you're an associate, you can only get to certain areas of the dispensary. The managers are the ones that can get to all doors. So, as an example, I think the IT room, you can see the IT data on there. Only managers are coded to be able to get into that room. On the floor, I don't know if it shows it here, but we would have a team working in the vault. When they get, they get a notification, the customer's in, they get the product ready, put it in a bag, and then it goes through a pass-through. And so, when the customer steps up to the floor or steps up to the POS, the associate will go to the appropriate pass-through, so A through M or N through Z, and take the product out. And then, there's eight steps that we require that they practice at the POS, so that we can ensure what the customer ordered is what's in their bag. On here, it says that a typical transactions or the average is eight minutes. That would encompass those that are placing orders in the dispensary. If somebody places their order online, they can usually, from car, you know, from exiting their car to getting back in, is under five minutes. Okay. So, I think that's all I have.
What is your average number of customers come to see you each day?
It depends on the location. So, I was...
Average, average of your 39 locations, what is it?
Average, that would see us on a daily basis, 500.
And what's the peak time?
Peak time varies, but I will speak to Ohio. We have a peak time from 4 to 7.
Okay.
And then, we do have a bit of a peak in the afternoon, from 12 to 1:30.
I have a question. You mentioned about your, the vault. Is that where the product is stored in the vault at all times?
Yes. Yes. It's a state requirement. The product is never stored on the floor, ever. It only comes out when it comes out through the pass-through. And then, even when it's being delivered, it's being accepted in a vault as well.
And I had a question on your shift. You said three shifts, but you're open 9 to 9.
9 to 9. It varies on how the GM will write the schedule. There's nine, nine associates per shift.
Yeah.
So, they'll, they would do, typically, it would be three. There may be layered in two part-time people versus one full-time person, just depending if someone leaves at 4, somebody else might come in at 5. So, it's just a matter of making sure that we can meet the peak for the customers, but at 9 would be the most.
And you said your workforce, you had, going to create 30 plus, how many jobs?
39.
39 jobs. I have a question. I know with a dispensary in the Cleveland area, they did create some jobs, but not only did they create jobs, what piqued my interest was the owner of this shop, I think it was Amplify. What they said was, there were many people, they were blessed to be able to open up a dispensary, but there were many people who went away because they had marijuana. You know, they were charged with marijuana usage or carrying it, and they wanted to help right some of those wrongs.
Right.
Do you do anything like that?
Yes, we do. We have, it's led by Danielle Drummond. She's in Massachusetts. She, it's, we call it COLAB, so it's a collaboration. So, we work with different legal entities, those that may have that on record, and we do, we just did something in Sandusky, might have been around September, and anyone that has something like that on their record, slight infraction, things like that.
Yes.
We have legal teams come. They meet with the legal team. We pull all the paperwork together, and then we're an advocate and a force with them to get this off their record.
Okay. Yeah. I like that.
Yeah. It's, it's a really, it's a nice program. She does, she goes through every state in which we operate.
I miss your, you're so well here. Can you skip ahead to the dispensary security plan?
Oh, yeah.
I think you do a better job of that.
Oh, thank you. I live it. So, I'll speak to, I'll start with our security equipment. We have many alarm systems through. So, this is speaking to, everything is monitored 24/7. So, we have a camera system called Yer6, and we have, they, they send video footage to the cloud. They send it to our headquarters, and I can pull it up at any point in time and watch it on my laptop. We also have panic buttons. We have silent alarms. We have glass break sensors. There's motion detectors throughout the building in case something should fail. That motion would alert someone, and this is all monitored, as I said, by Yer6. We also do a lot of work when we open a dispensary with the police department and fire departments. I've, I don't say this as an ego thing, but I've been, I've led pretty much every opening with Ascend, and a week before we open, we invite the police department as well as the fire department. We set something up, and they come through. We walk them through. We show them all the systems. They see the front of the house, the back of the house. We give them the opportunity, if they want to talk to the associates, to make some requirements or some suggestions and stuff like that. In most areas, they will continue to stop by to see how things are going. I like having that relationship. I think it's, it feels good to the team, and the partnership has been really good. So...
Over the last year, how many times have, out of all of your locations, has your panic button been used?
Used for a reason. Like, I've had associates, associates with a training set out.
Yeah, that happens in my shop, too. So, I, I don't own a dispensary shop, but need my workplace. Yeah.
Yeah. Zero.
Yeah. Okay. And then, silent alarms, any time that's been used in the last, at all 39 locations? Okay. All right.
I'll just ask one more. Once people come in, purchase, and leave, do you find that people loiter in the parking lot?
No. We have no loitering signs. And then, part of the reason with the security, the folks that are there, the presence that they have, they do what I call a figure eight. So, they move around the dispensary. They'll check the vault, go to the back of the house. They go out the door, go around the property, just to make sure we don't have any of that or that we don't encourage it. So, best defense, a good offense. That's pretty much so. We've, we've never had that.
You sound like your vault is like the Federal Reserve.
It kind of is. When I started and they were talking about a vault, I was like, whoa, you know? So, it is, and I'll tell you, and this may be off script, so, excuse me, but the vaults are all reinforced. So, there's concrete blocks, then there's chicken wire, and then there's like a couple layers of drywall and boards and things like that. It's all the way around, and then the doors are set up. I just left Cincinnati, and Eric can attest, they have this huge bank vault door, and then there's like a second one to get in. It's very difficult to get into the vaults. So, unless you work there. Restricted access, as I said, and I think I spoke to this earlier, we have operational card access systems, and if, if there was an associate that was maybe disgruntled or angry and they leave, we can turn off their access immediately. And then, we do code them. So, as I said, the IT room is only for managers, and that's to protect the integrity of the systems and things like that. And then, we, you can't get into the building as an associate unless you have that card. Comprehensive surveillance, there's cameras all around the building. I think Eric may have alluded to this, and then we have lights and things like that. I'll honestly share, I think we have more cameras than Hollywood, and I've worked with some local police departments at times, like if there's a hit and run out on the road in front of the dispensary, they'll ask us if we have anything on camera. They'll come in, we kind of pull up the cameras. They can look through to see if there's anything that they can use. And then, onsite security personnel, as I said. We have training programs. We typically hire folks that have experience. Right now, some of the folks that are working for us in Cincinnati work at the stadium, football. Yeah. So, and then, so, but they wanted to come to something a little bit more fun. Sorry, guys. So, a few other things. We do have a program, should there ever be an active aggressor. I've never had that in my five-and-a-half years with Ascend. So, there's the silent alarm system, things like that. We can react quickly. There is a, an standard operating procedure for banning a customer. We would move to ban a customer for racial slurs, violence, or any kind of sexual impropriety. That's all handled through our call center in Illinois, and I work closely with the call center. So, we email the customer. We will mail them a letter, and then, should there be any concerns, I will make the phone call to them. I like it being done out of the call center, because I don't want our teams to get in the middle of anything like that. Typically, if they say we need to ban a customer, they send the date and the time report on what happened. We can view it on video, so we can kind of watch and see what was going on, and then we go ahead and process that. For severe weather in the Midwest, I've had quite a few tornadoes roll through. We have a process in every single state that's acceptable, but typically, if a tornado starts to hit and you're in the dispensary, there is a lockdown, and we do invite all the customers to go to the back of the house where it's safest. Other than that, there's no reason for the customers to ever be in the back of the house. We have site security plans that have been devised by somebody that is a specialist at this and lives in our corporate offices. We have site security plans that have been devised by somebody that is a specialist at this and lives in our corporate offices. We have plans for bomb threat diversion prevention, and that is like if I would buy product and then I would try to pass it to Greg because he's not allowed to have it, so. We watch for all of that, and when we do see it, that would be another reason for banning a consumer. We do report it to the police. Evacuation plans, and if should there ever be a reason to evacuate, we have all those in plan, in place, as well as emergency action plans. So recently Ohio got hit by weather, and what we did was those that came into work, we made sure first off that we took care of them, they had stuff, we provided lunches for the team. The general manager, Keisha, kept her regional informed, Michelle. And by four o'clock, we made the decision to close early so that the team members could get home. We provided Uber, Uber, Uber rides for those that had taken the bus so that they didn't have to wait for the bus in the cold. And I always offer like hotel rooms for like managers and stuff if they want that, so.
Quick question.
Yeah.
Because you're talking about security and all of that, obviously the surrounding community will be very interested in understanding. How often do you have, obviously, inebriated customers come in, driving in?
How often do we have aggravated customers driving in?
Not aggravated.
Inebriated.
Inebriated, so.
We don't let them in.
High customers.
Right, right.
Come in and then driving, and what do you, what do you do with them, even if you-
We would call the police.
Don't allow them.
Right, right. I remember that happening one time way back, and it was in Illinois. And I happened to be there, and I could see the interaction, I was watching it, the man was outside, and I could see what the associate, I knew something was wrong and I didn't know what it was. So I went out and I was trying to calm the customer down, but you could obviously tell that he was, whatever it was, I think it was alcohol. And while we're talking to him, I just whispered to the associate, call 911. And the police came on-site and escorted him off.
How often does that happen?
That was probably four or five years ago. To that extreme, rare, there was, you know, if somebody comes in and they're obviously intoxicated, we refuse to serve them. So I don't think it's up there, but when you enter and your ID's checked, you can smell alcohol, you can tell. You can tell when somebody's like out of their mind. They don't get past the lobby. So there's a button that we press or a card that we swipe that would open the door into this dispensary. And we don't let them in there. For me, it's, you know, typically they, if that would happen, it usually ends up in their route to the associates, there's things like that. It really is rare.
And if they're drove in, so they're allowed to drive out?
Well, if, if there's some, if, I don't know if, how they got there, so.
Just one last question for me on the security thing. When was the last incident at any of your locations and what was it? And, you know, when did it happen, out of all 39, when was the last time you had an incident and what was the specific incident?
A security incident.
Just a general.
Right. Way back in-
Or anybody of the-
Might have been, might have been July.
Okay.
You know, so, yeah, and it was rare, I mean, it was, it was 3:00 AM. And I got notified because everything, everything worked. So it was 3:00 AM, the alarms went off, the police got there. There wasn't any, like they didn't even get into the dispensary vault or anything.
Someone just tried to break in or something?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
And before that, it was three years ago in Illinois, same thing. They threw a rock at the window, the alarm went off.
Thank you.
Sure.
Just a note on the security, I'm not aware of a successful break-in in the state of Ohio, there just hasn't been one. The Ohio State University did a study on dispensaries in 2019. And what they found is because of all the heightened security procedures, and this is generally across the country, but because of the heightened security procedures, a dispensary tends to lower crime in the area. You've got the 360-degree cameras both inside and outside, everything inside other than the restrooms are covered.
Yep, everything except the restrooms.
Right. So it, you know, dispensary does tend to lower crime in the area.
That assumes that there's, there's crime already in the area, right? If it's an area that already has very low crime, then you're not really getting any additional benefit, yeah, yeah.
Much effect, but it won't increase, at least according to this study. There are some pictures that are attached to the back portion of this, maybe a couple slides from now.
Is that further into the presentation?
Right, a couple more slides, yeah. Like there, yeah, there you go. You want to talk about what this will look like?
Yeah, this is the interior of a typical dispensary. If you went into Cincinnati, you would see this, if you went into Sandusky or Pickwatt. On the, what I would call the sales floor, there's two tables. Those tables have information in them regarding different product and the benefits of that product. That is just informative only. The black fixture next to that is what would be like accessories, some folks like certain things that they would like with their, their product. There is a, you go through a locked door to get behind the POS. And the TVs and things like that, those are just like branding that marketing puts together, flip through, things like that. You would enter one door and then once you pay, your exit door is a completely different door. So the flow is really smooth, people aren't running into each other. Okay.
Thanks, definitely. So I think we'll finish up here, I just wanted to say this, this is a typical Ascend dispensary. Ascend is a very high-performing operator. You may not see this level of interior for some other operators, but this is, this is typical for what Ascend provides. Last thing I'll say is, you know, Ohio is the most highly regulated state for cannabis. There's not another state in the US. So these operators are held to the highest standards, and that's why I believe, you know, Ohio tends to have, it's more conservative, it has a better result for the public. Every product is tested, you know, the, they're very high testing regimen, you know, very high, as you can tell, with state safety standards that are required, it's more than any other state, and I think leads to a better result for the people of Ohio. That's our presentation, so if you have any additional questions or if you can begin with public comment, let us know.
Do you have some questions right now?
Yeah, yeah. One of my concerns, or let me ask this question first. For your other 39 locations, this will be number 40 or will this be number 39? I don't know what it is.
This would be within the 39th, yeah.
So this would be the 39th, you may have some other applications out there somewhere else. But with respect to how close they are to neighbors or residents or people living next door, I see the, you're asking for a divergence of the 100-foot distance. I'm just wondering if there are any like immediately next door to someone's home or closer, are there line? Or what's the rule for some of your other locations? Are they greater than 100 foot or are you closer within that 100 foot? And if you don't know, that's fine, I'm just kidding. Since, yeah, residential, since you cannot be within 100 foot of the residential line.
Generally, if you're a commercial, of various type of businesses, there's a 100-foot buffer from the property line to a structure or a building of that use. And that would also like apply to the existing cell tower buildings there. Since they're existing, it's a little more problematic because they're there. But generally, we like to have a separation of the commercial use in terms of noise and traffic and light and all that from a residential area. In this case, the residential area is not actually technically in the township, it is actually City of Columbus, it has been a next.
Right.
Robin, if you would have anything else to add?
I don't have anything to add, Eric, can you pull up the-
Yeah. And the reason, and the reason I'm asking it with this thought is because next door, of course, they're building 1,000 apartments and that sort of thing, and if that's their, you know, residential line, then you're 30 foot away, then that's-
Can you pull up the Galaxy?
Thoughts and concern.
Yeah, so, can you point out the parcel that we are considering, there we go.
Yeah.
Rezoning. But the green area, and Eric, help me if I'm wrong, is what is the apartment complex that Mr. Pierce was discussing. There's also parking garages and several commercial uses along Ikea Way, I believe is what it's called.
Continuation of working tonight.
Yeah.
So is that existing now?
That is, some is there and some is being built as we speak. And others, it's, I don't know enough about City of Columbus to know they're phasing. Robin, if you have any better ideas?
No, unfortunately, I don't have any great insights, I pulled this from, I did a Google search for Galaxy at Polaris, and this was the site plan that was on their website, so.
Is that okay with the commission?
Sure, sure, yeah, yeah.
So I'll say in Sandusky, we are, we're right next to a house. One of the things that was beautiful there is we have screening, right? So we have bushes, we have trees. I'm looking at this rendering, and I know, and I was just at the site the other day, we have a lot of trees around there. So to the extent that our neighbor does want to build this, I would encourage them to keep that screening up because I think those trees provide a really nice buffer between our retail and their-
Now, I'm curious, I don't mean to interrupt you. You were just there the other day and you didn't see all that building, construction that's going on over there?
I did not.
Yeah, I mean, it's like pretty amazing, I'm pretty amazed at what they're going to do there. But I don't know, well, yeah, maybe you didn't come down that other side of the street because I don't know, you missed that, it's a lot.
You probably wouldn't see it.
Yeah, maybe not, yeah.
You would have to see it from Ikea Way.
Yeah.
You wouldn't see it from Powell because I was there yesterday.
Yeah.
Got it, okay, that clears it up.
Okay.
But yeah, I think, I think there's good screening there, I wouldn't be concerned about that. And it looks like there's a pool or, it looks like some of the housing is on the other side of the screening and on the other side of the drive, if I'm looking at that correctly.
It's just that if I'm understanding correctly, that the, the line that exists there is considered residential by the City of Columbus, that's my concern of, if the, if the township is saying such buildings need to be 100 foot away from a residential line, and yours is only 30, then that gives me concern. My only other question, and I don't know if we know this, I know there's going to be a lot of mixed use there, there's going to be a lot of retail that's going to be in that space. I think you said for daycare schools and so forth, 500 foot. I don't know if anything like that has already been approved in that space as well.
Yeah, so-
And I don't know if you all did any research on that, if you're familiar with it.
Yeah, so, I mean, these are two existing buildings, right? So any commercial building that goes, any commercial enterprise that goes into these buildings will have the same issue, it's the same, same issue.
Yeah, but there's already been zoned for daycare, so daycare, go there with, without apology. You're asking us to make some divergences, right?
Yes.
To approve those because you want to put your story there, so.
But the, so the daycare was only, that's correct, that is, that is correct. The daycare was the, the one site that was there.
Yeah.
There was another building that was proposed that hasn't gone up yet, so.
And are you all planning on building that third building, I think that-
There is no timeframe.
Considered option there?
There's no timeframe for that.
But it's still something you'd like to consider as an option?
We would, we would like to consider that, it would not be-
If business goes extraordinarily well, let's build another one, yeah.
It would not be a cannabis use that would be prohibited by the, by state law.
Okay, all right, cool.
Yeah.
One other question. How close, do you have any, I feel like I'm learning this thing now. But anyhow, do you have any dispensaries that are near or across from a, where alcohol is sold?
Yes, so I can't actually answer that for Ascend because I don't know, outside of Ohio, I don't really know your space. But I do a lot of this work, this type of zoning work for lots of different clients, and there are a fair number of cannabis clients. And I can tell you that, yes, there, there are cannabis dispensaries that are right next door to a house or to apartments, you see that in Columbus, Dayton, there's a location Akron like that. You know, maybe 50% of them are, you know, right next door. There are, you know, down the street, generally you'll see a bar or a restaurant, you know, with, with an alcohol use nearby. You know, I will point out that unlike a dispensary where the product can never be opened, right? It's, it comes sealed, the transaction happens, it's sealed, and the clients are told you have to leave and use that at home. They will not allow you to use it on-site. Differs tremendously from a bar or a restaurant, right? But yeah, they'll, it's similar to any other retail use, there'll be a mix of nearby uses.
Yeah, because right across the street, right, is the-
It's not that direction, it's still a range.
Yeah, 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 okay. And people are able to come there and hang out, drink and blah, blah, blah.
They can taste what they said is not enough to get inebriated.
Okay. All right, thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
That's all my questions.
Does the commission have any? Do you all have, are you all complete with your presentation, the applicant?
We're good.
You're good? Actually, if I can allow, I would like to take this time to ask if our legal counsel can speak to the resolution 24, I guess, 228 that the township trustees passed allowing dispensary use? And if you could also discuss the office commercial use and what is allowed, and maybe Robin, if you, the two of you could share what is allowed under an office commercial use in the township? And a little bit about the background of this resolution? Since there's been a lot of questions about that, of what's considered commercial and how this would be considered zoning-wise.
Good evening, everyone. For those in the audience, my name's Julie Donan, I'm an attorney with Brochus Johnson &amp; Griggs. Our office serves as legal counsel for Orange Township. I've been involved and been at many zoning commission meetings, but our office also works with the Board of Trustees. So to provide some background and-
Can we have the address for the record?
Oh, of course, absolutely, 1001 South Cassingham Road, 43209. For, to provide the folks in here with some background, a few years ago, Ohio permitted medical marijuana, and the law basically left it to townships to either, they could pass a resolution to prohibit dispensaries, manufacturing facilities, that type of thing, for medical marijuana. Or they could permit a certain number of those types of facilities. Orange Township at the time enacted a moratorium that basically prohibited all medical marijuana facilities. Flash forward a few years later, again, everyone I think is aware that on the ballot, recreational and adult-use marijuana went to the voters of the state of Ohio, it passed. At that time, a similar law went into place that mirrored the medical marijuana restrictions, and the Board of Trustees decided to, all right, well, do we, do we pass a resolution to enact a similar moratorium to medical marijuana? Or do we revisit? And our office represents a lot of townships across the state of Ohio, this is just an anecdote. But what I can say, and it was consistent with Orange Township, when medical marijuana went in, overwhelmingly our clients adopted resolutions to prohibit those facilities from coming in. Quite frankly, when adult and recreational use, the same process was, was put forth to Board of Trustees, our office expected those same clients to proceed the same way. And we've been surprised that that really hasn't been the case. So what I can say is the Board of Trustees that, at the meeting, the applicant referenced, one of the big topic points, you know, the trustees referenced, well, how did, how did the voters in Orange Township decide? And in part because the majority of voters in Orange Township voted to approve- approve, um, uh, adult use in, uh, marijuana, the trustees decided to lift the complete moratorium and permit up to a total of two dispensaries to be in the township. They put some additional restrictions that I think have been referenced here tonight, or referenced in, uh, Robin's presentation, um, that they'd be considered a retailer commercial use. Uh, they're also required to join what's called a joint economic development district, um, which meet, that's a long way of saying, um, any dispensary that goes into Orange Township is gonna have to pay income tax. So that's not an extra tax on residents, um, but the, the business, the net profits of the businesses, the business and those who work there will be subject to income tax. So they will be, um, they'll be paying that, which is, is, um, not something across the board. Um, all right, that was the background on that. Background in terms of where we are. In terms of, of this particular application, as, as I think Robin said, uh, it is currently a zoned, a planned commercial and office district. Um, a planned district as opposed to a straight dis- zoning district in Orange Township, um, is a, i- i- if, if property is zoned in a particular planned district, um, that means that it's, you know, you've generally identified these are particularly acceptable uses, but the approved development plan is the specific restrictions for the site. Um, and so if a property wants to act different from the uses that are approved in the development plan, they have to come for you and go through the, the zoning process. So, um, that is a, a long way of kind of giving the background on, on the legality and the process of where we got here. I'll pause. Does the board have, or the commission have any questions for me or, or that type of thing?
How many dispensaries have we got now, so far?
So they're, so, uh, the board, when they passed the resolution, they authorized up to two. Um, if this one is approved, it would be one. Um, I believe there is, there is a possibility of a second one. I'm not quite sure where they are in terms of the, um, but again, only, only two. And, um, I can't speak to the, Greg may be able to speak to the legalities of the lottery and all of that sort of thing. But, um, as Robin mentioned, um, before they even got to this point, and before, I, I would suspect any other applicant, before they could get to this point, they'd have to get, I believe is the one oh four B form signed by the township. Um, and I, I know that Robin has worked with, with these folks and then another applicate, applicant. Um, so before anyone would come before you, they would have to meet with Robin first and get that form signed. Um, and as the township has signed those two forms, um, I don't think that they anticipate additional coming down the line.
Got it.
All right. Um, the only question I perhaps have is that there are right now two buildings on the site with the potential of a third one. Right now, we're just looking at building A being the potential marijuana dispensary. Um, the other building B and potential building C, under, if we rezone this, um, which would then be rezoned to a commercial office use, what does our code allow to be neighbors to this, uh, potential dispensary?
So that is, that is dependent on, again, what is it included in the development plan? My understanding now is that the language is pretty general and, and, um, I don't have it in front of me, but just generally provides for acceptable retail, commercial office buildings, or I'm sorry, office uses. Um, so if the zoning commission were to, um, recommend approval as is, and if the trustees were to adopt that recommendation, what that would mean is, um, at a later time, if a commercial retail operation wanted to move into that existing space or future site, they would basically come to Robin, say, this is what we want to do. Um, I think Rob, they'd probably set, uh, fill a change of use permit. Um, but, but they would not come to the zoning commission, they would not go to the trustees. Um, something that, that can be done and what Robin, um, I believe, mentioned in his staff report, uh, that the zoning commission does have the ability to, um, make recommendations. And so if there are specific uses that, um, the zoning commission wants to specifically permit or specifically prohibit, to say, okay, maybe commercial and office, keeping it general of permitted uses, but we, but X, Y, and Z is not permitted, that's certainly an option as well. So, so that way you can narrow it down, and if, if a prohibited, uh, or a use that's not permitted, uh, wanted to come into that space at a later time, they would have to basically go through the process and, and see the zoning commission and trustees again.
What is a marijuana cultivating operation called? Will that be a commercial use of the building?
So, uh, the, uh, the dispensary is considered a, would be considered a, a commercial retail use.
No, the additional buildings, if they wanted to cultivate on, on site.
So a, yeah, a cultivator would not be, so, so what the township's resolution, um, it only permitted a dispensary? The township could have permitted, um, um, I'm gonna say manufacturing cultivator, thank you. The, the township could have also permitted a, a set number of cultivators in the township. They did not permit that.
Okay.
So it truly is the, the, the retail dispensary, uh, operation is the only, up, up to two. That's the only permitted operation. Potentially permitted operation.
Does the commission have any other?
I have a question for Robin. I don't know, maybe you may know as well. Uh, with respect to, uh, uh, the county traffic story, uh, you know, certainly with all those apartments being built next door, I see that they're doing some things, that's heavy equipment being moved over there. Any, has there been any conversation or consideration for adjustment of the roads or that area with respect to traffic? And, and the reason I'm asking is because I, I think they shared that approximately five hundred visitors come there. It's already a challenging little thing there, and five hundred additional cars, and then you got all these apartments, the, the thousand apartments and everything else coming there.
Um, so not at this stage in the development process. They would have to go through that, uh, process when they, uh, go in for their building permit. Uh, every commercial building permit in Delaware County has to go through the commercial, uh, engineering process. Uh, they would look at it, uh, at that time. Uh, my guess is since it's, uh, since they're existing buildings, uh, the use might change. I don't know what kind of traffic study would be required if the, I think if the potential building C were built, that's when they would scrutinize it a little further.
Yeah, I was just wondering if there was, without respect to anyone doing anything at that particular space, whether or not there was just a general conversation of widening those roads in general, because it's gonna be a busy, busy place.
Again, I think not at this stage in the development process.
Okay.
Have they just worked on the roads, what, five years ago? Do you do that intersection?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So.
I have.
And maybe that was already accounted for. But yeah.
One quick question, not for you, Robin, for our friends at the table. Is it five hundred people per day will go to your shop?
That's an average of all of the locations.
Okay.
So in Ohio, it could be three to five hundred. So, you know, like, you know, probably three hundred times a day, with it just events. So five hundred would be pretty much including New Jersey.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Um, does the commission have any more questions? So what I'd like to do right now is open the floor, um, to Orange Township residents, uh, to, uh, comment on the proposal. Uh, I would remind you, since we are, um, full room here, to try to keep it short, three to five minutes. Uh, remember to state your name and address, uh, and try not to be repetitive. If someone's already given the argument, you can just come up and say, I agree, I'm concerned about whatever your concern is. And that way, we want to try to make sure as many people as, as possible get an opportunity to speak pro or con. We're an open forum here.
Do we need to acknowledge the, the emails or whatever we've already received?
Um, actually, we have received some emails. Normally, we do not, um, speak, or, yeah. But we have received some emails, um, from, uh, neighbors, both pro and con, um, for Orange Township residents. Uh, Robin has provided us with them, so we know some of, um, uh, of your, uh, neighbors have already, uh, commented on the proposal. But feel free to speak out. Um, it's nice that we have the community here.
One, one quick question before you. Uh, did you all meet with the community or, or invite the community for a conversation yet? Just curious. Okay. All right.
Okay.
No worries. Thanks.
Can I come up?
Please. Just remember, name and address for the record. Uh, and as an aside, these proceedings are being, um, recorded. Um, they are, I guess we have a YouTube channel, and the trustees will be able to review them, uh, as well as any letters you write them, uh, when they meet about this matter as well.
All right. Thank you for hearing from me. I'm Mike Negoti, thirty-eight seventy-four Waverly Place Drive. Uh, I've been a resident there for thirty-two years. Um, being at the edge of our township, we've been forced to endure a lot of things that you guys don't have any control and we don't have any control with, with being next to, um, Columbus. We've dealt with an amphitheater, we've had all the traffic issues of that, and we couldn't fight and change anything. Um, I would urge you to not accept this rezoning. We have ample areas for retail already designated as retail in our township. And I believe they can find an adequate space in one of those areas. Um, that would be my biggest concern. I have one question on if, with the security, is there security armed?
No.
I know in, in Denver, they've had issues, and I know mostly it's because it's a cash business out there, but I, do you guys take cash?
We, we take, can I just answer from here?
Um, yeah, but.
State your name.
State your name.
Kathleen Olivastro.
And your address, for good measure.
One nine zero six Chesterfield Ridge Circle, and that's in Chesterfield, Missouri. Um, so we don't have armed security guards. There's not been a need, and I think it's safer. Um, there was another concern that was brought up.
Cash.
Cash. We do accept cash. Seventy percent of our transactions are done with debit cards. Um, so that's the majority of it. It's rare that we have all cash. We just don't have that happening. So.
All right. Because in the, in the Denver area, when they've done it, uh, they've had several car smash and grabs, um, which are violent acts and will usually end up in a chase, which puts everybody at danger. Um, I questioned the Ohio State study that says having dispensaries will lower crime. That means if we'd have twenty dispensaries, we'd have no crime? I don't believe that. Um, and I'd like to read this, um, that study. Um, and I know a lot of people voted to have marijuana legalized. That doesn't mean we want it sold in our backyard. If people want to buy it and use it, they can go and buy it and bring it back home or wherever they choose to use it. But that's my thing. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Come on up.
Hi, good evening. Um, my name's Addison Smith. I live at eight zero four four Hick, Hickory Ridge Court, around the corner from the proposed site. Um, I just had a couple questions. Um, the counselor spoke through, and I know marijuana was voted in by the residents of Ohio. Did that include knowing what the percentage of, of voters or people in Orange Township said okay to that?
Yes.
Yes, because usually it's done by precinct.
Okay. So it's fifty-eight percent.
Is that what your quote was on the, I don't know what the, maybe you all know what the number?
Correct. The, um, so the, the trustees looked at the precincts in Orange Township.
Okay.
And, um, and based on that, I believe it was high fifties, low sixties percentage voted to approve, just in Orange Township, not statewide.
Okay. Thank you. Um, and next, um, the distillery that's going in immediately across the street, do we know what the proposed or projected traffic is for that piece of property? Because I guess my concern is, yes, the road was just widened four or five years ago. It's a busy street, everybody's using it as a shortcut, and you add in five hundred customers a day here, and what's gonna happen at the distillery? I mean, it's gonna be a large amount of traffic.
Uh, Robin, can you, um, speak to that? Um, I know we, uh, several of us on the commission reviewed that, but it's been some time.
Yeah. I don't remember what.
Thank you. And, and yes, I would concur with the previous speaker that I think there's a, a lot of other locations that would be more appropriate for this kind of, um, commercial use. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, and, um, I don't have a, a precise answer for you, uh, but again, the, the distillery as a commercial business has to go through the same permitting requirements. Uh, and so, uh, they've already, I believe, gone through that, uh, with the county, uh, meaning that, uh, if and when, uh, retail use is approved here, then the county, when they evaluate this, they will take into account the additional traffic across the street in addition to the additional traffic here.
Okay.
Do we know, Robin, uh, what a typical daycare traffic is in that area?
I, I am not a traffic engineer. Uh, I do not know that.
Just seriously.
The daycare is not currently open, is it?
I think he meant daytime, daytime.
Oh, day, I think it's a daycare, okay.
Yeah, yeah. No, daytime.
It's replacing that, so.
It's replacing, uh, daycare.
Yeah, I know it is. I know exactly where it is.
So, and yeah, we're not traffic engineers there, but those of us who are parents have an idea of, uh, what peak hours of the daycare traffic are.
Yeah, sure.
Um, is there anybody else who would like to speak, uh, before the commission, um, about this project?
Hi, Courtney Schumaker, seven nine nine one Hickory Ridge Court, right down the street from Madison. Um, I was just curious, there wa- there, there wasn't anything in the presentation about the proposed use of the second floor of the dispensary? One. Um, two, does a commercial space or law allow for any kind of consumption of, next door perhaps, of the marijuana? And, uh, do we know the proposed tax revenue of the, you said we get sales tax. I didn't know if that number had been presented as a positive worth it.
That's a good question. Do you know the percentage on that tax story? Uh, the, the,
I believe the applicant may have those figures.
Okay.
Sure. So, um.
Can you come up?
Do you have specific figures that, that we can read?
Can you speak at the podium so everybody can hear? We can hear, but I'm afraid people in the back corner can't.
Again, Greg Gerosby, six six seven Park Edge Drive, Gehanna, Ohio. Um, yeah, there, we, we, we don't release specific figures for sales for competitive reasons. None of, not a single one of my clients has, has done that, and there's good reason for that. Um, what I can say is these are, um, high performing. They contribute a lot to the tax base, uh, here in Orange Township. Uh, as Robin mentioned, they're required to be part of the JED. So that means, uh, you know, income tax is going to the township, uh, that, um, you know, the, uh, employee taxes are going to the township, and then, uh, sales taxes will be collected as well. On top of the sales tax, which applies to any products that are sold at the dispensary, there's also an additional excise tax. So it's a ten percent tax on sales of adult use, so the, the non-medical marijuana products. That ten percent tax, thirty-six percent of it goes directly to the host community. So that would go to Orange Township. So, uh, think of it as ten percent of the sales, uh, thirty-six percent. So three point six percent of all adult use sales will go directly to the township. And that is a considerable amount.
You know, the income tax percentage that is expected to go here, is it two percent? Is it two and a half percent? What is the?
Two point.
Two point?
Two point five.
Yeah, same as Columbus? Okay. Yeah. All right. Thanks.
There was another question that was brought up, I wish you wanted to address.
Okay, feel free.
Ohio does not allow consumption lounges, uh, so there would not be a consumption lounge at the neighboring building or at the proposed building. As it relates to the second floor, do you want to speak to that at all, Kathy?
Name and address again? Kathleen Olivastro, but I'll hold on the address. Um, second floor will be secured off. So there will be, it'll be locked with a security lock. It'll have a, what we call an RFID card that only the manager and the assistant manager and the regional director will have access to. I have that in one other location in Illinois, and that's, it's just all walled off. There's no admittance note. Nobody ever goes there. Should there be a need, the managers do have an access. Sometimes the state would want to open it up and see what's going on. We do go through state inspections once a quarter, and they show up randomly. We never know when they're coming.
Okay. Um, and then also to that comment of what. And then also to that comment of what potentially could move in the commercial space next to the dispensary, which is why I asked our legal counsel, that the commission does have some discretion along with the zoning department to limit uses that we might feel would be inappropriate next to a medical dispensary.
Can I speak to that?
Yes.
As the owner, would be very open to putting in the list that was requested for prohibited. We've had doctors' offices inquire about it, I've had a rehabilitation clinic ask about it, and I've had a gymnasium that trains cheerleaders, et cetera, ask about it, but no problems putting in the prohibited list.
Okay. And Robin, can you remind everybody what your prohibited list was under consideration?
Pardon me, sir. So, the, the list that I suggested, which is not exhaustive, but typical prohibited uses in this type of district would include auto-oriented uses such as fueling stations, car washes, or auto repair, standalone drive-throughs, adult entertainment, storage or self-storage for the public, pawn shops, check cashing, or short-term loan establishments as a primary use, skill game establishments, outdoor storage of boats, tractor trailers, or recreational vehicles. Again, that is not exhaustive, but just a suggested list.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, Michael Lazar, thirty-eight nineteen Waverly Place Drive. I have one question. How often or what is the frequency in which these folks can get the medical marijuana or the recreational marijuana? Can they come in daily? Can they come in hourly? Can they come in weekly? What is it?
There are limits set by the state on how much. Limits set by the state on how much they can get, but they can come in.
Can you approach the podium, also people in the back can hear. I'm sorry to remind you of this.
I'm sorry, you guys, yeah. There are limits set by the state on how much a consumer can purchase. The consumer can come in every day, and it's, there's nothing within the state regulations that give me the right to tell them they can't.
Okay, when you say, how much is it? Thirty grams? An ounce? Fifty grams? What is it?
It depends on what it is that they're purchasing. So, if it's flour, I think it might be a half ounce or an ounce. I don't have the specific information. Edibles go in grams, so maybe two hundred grams, which would be two packs of edibles. But again, I don't have the specifics, so.
But it is regulated by the state.
Highly regulated to where, when it goes through with customer, consumer's name, it, the system shuts it down. It gets red flagged, they'd have to get a manager to unlock it, which the manager sees the red flag, they can't go any further with the transaction.
But they can buy that same amount every day?
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
Okay. I agree with my neighbor. I oppose this application.
My name is Franz Geiger. I'm not a resident of Orange Township, but we are the developer of Polaris, and I office every day up off of Lyra Drive at eight eight hundred Lyra Drive. My address is seventy-four forty-seven All Path Road, New Albany, Ohio. I don't like to speak against applications because we ask for approval from zoning boards like yourselves. So, it's not something that I enjoy doing. However, I've been at Polaris for twenty-seven years. I'm president of our Polaris Owners Association. We've invested close to a billion dollars in the Polaris area, and I'm proud of what we've done. I know there's some things that some people here don't like, I get it. But we have put in a lot of effort on restrictions, restricting noxious uses. We maintain the interchange. We maintain landscaping. We have design standards. That development is an employment center in the state of Ohio. It's a retail center in the state of Ohio. We have issues with growth, we're dealing with them. Nobody's more passionate about it than myself. I love to work with any of the neighbors to make it better, and I think some of them would attest that I've tried to do that. I also know what the revenue is that we produce. We produce well over sixty million dollars in sales tax revenue for Delaware County annually.
I wish we could.
Well over thirty million dollars of income tax revenue for the city of Columbus annually, and millions of dollars in real estate taxes with no, virtually no burden on Olentangie schools. So, why am I here? Why am I concerned? I'm concerned because we don't know the answers. We're hearing what they think it's going to be, what the effect is going to be. We, this is an experiment in the state of Ohio right now. The reason we put a restriction, so by the way, our Polaris Owners Association, we restricted this use at Polaris. It's twelve hundred acres of development. So, why did we restrict the use? We have a lot of, you know, intensive commercial uses, correct? We did because we don't know the effect of this. I don't know the effect of, I have studies here I'll submit that say it affects property value. Greg will say, no, it doesn't, he has studies too, or it actually reduces crime. I don't believe that. But what I do know is that it's an experiment. It's a new use. We didn't want to lead the parade on a new use. We have too much at stake. We have too much invested in that development, in the community. And while that, they lifted the moratorium, that particular site was a daycare. It didn't have five hundred visitors a day. This will probably have more. Somebody should ask, and I'm curious how many points of sale they're going to have. Because five minutes, in a, you know, you can maybe get a transaction done in five minutes, but there's, you can run through a lot of people at that location. So, it's a much more intensive use than the daycare. The other issue is we have a shared drive. The applicant has not come and talked to us about how that shared drive could work. We donated a lot of the right-of-way for these road improvements that existed. And you can say, yeah, well, we created a lot of the road traffic, sure, but we did donate the right-of-way for the road improvements and, you know, put bond money in to finance a lot of this. So, these are issues that we'd like to, to work out, apart from the use itself. I could have done this use, I've had plenty of dispensaries come to Polaris and want to do use, do these uses. We could have got our highest rental rates from them. We chose not to. And unfortunately, we're getting, there's a triangle right now, but we're getting bookended by the uses. There's going to be, there's already one on LaZelle Road. Go by that site, it's packed, and it doesn't look great. Then there's another site that, that we're waiting. We're hoping they'll work with us on doing some design standards, because we do have design standards at Polaris. I heard nothing about landscaping on this site. It's just like, it doesn't matter. Why doesn't it matter? It doesn't matter because this is a destination use. The customer doesn't care. They, they maybe like what's inside. I will say that they're, what they have inside is nice. I don't doubt that. I just don't believe that this is the appropriate site for this use. And, and why don't I? Because we restricted it. We could have done it. It would have been easy. I have vacant space, I'd love to fill it at fifty to sixty bucks a square foot. It's not going to happen because we don't think it's the appropriate use of Polaris. We don't think it's consistent with a first-class development. And we also know that our retailers that also come into shopping centers, they want restrictions against it. So, why do they want restrictions against it when we're building shopping centers? These are the issues that we don't want to be first with this use. The communities that we compete with for office users and, and those, you know, we compete with the other suburbs, most of them have a moratorium or a restriction against this use. I, I submit that there's better sites for this use. I don't want to be first to see how it plays out. Some of the issues that there's a divergence, I would like to speak. Yes, we do have some residential up there, it's not going to be single-family homes, but I think we would like to deal, talk to the applicant about those issues if the use gets approved. Because I think there's some other things that could be done to make the site tighter, look nicer, and more commitments could certainly be made. And so, I, I have a couple of reports that I'll submit to Robin about the effects of dispensaries in different areas. I'm sure Greg can supply reports that say, you know, there's studies, who funds them, right? I, I would say that these are probably independent studies, and so I'll submit those to you as evidence. But I asked the commission to consider this application. You have the right to approve this use. It is a change in the use and the development plan, so I ask you to, to say no to it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to brief, briefly comment on that. I know we don't want to talk about how much money we make, it's competitive secrets, but I think he's opening the door, saying that Polaris is bringing in all this money to Orange Township. I, I know a good portion of Polaris is in the city of Columbus. It'll be a three point six percent taxes that'll go here to Orange Township. On the low end, we have modeled that that's going to be two hundred thousand every year, and on the high end, we've modeled it to be four hundred and twenty-five thousand. There's no restrictions on how that money can be used. Want a new firehouse? Use it for that. Want law enforcement improvement? Use it for that. I, I don't want to get into a, you know, is cannabis a, a first-class item or not a first-class item? But, but since you raised it, I do know that there's a lot of restaurants in Polaris that sell alcohol. I don't know if anyone saw the recent Surgeon General that came out last Friday and advised that this causes cancer. There's been no such reports regarding cannabis.
Not yet.
Causing cancer. And the recent studies over the last few years, cannabis use in the state, or in this country, let me step back, has outstripped alcohol use, and for good reason. There aren't those studies, as you've identified, Mr. Pierce, that, that suggest that it causes cancer, that causes these issues like alcohol does. So, I just, I take offense to, we're not a first-class establishment from somebody who's also selling alcohol that the Surgeon General says causes cancer.
Yeah.
Are there any more comments from the?
My name is Mike Myers, fifty-five seventy Worthington Road, Westerville, Ohio. I am not a resident of Orange Township, but I am a business owner and landowner in Orange Township, and I live just north of the proposed area. I have nothing new to add, but I just wanted to agree with the rest of the residents and Franz as well. I don't believe this is a good use. I believe that with all the new apartments and residential area, that it should remain a daycare. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Amanda Mosley, and I live at thirty-five sixty-five East Powell Road, so this is right on my road. And I agree with everyone, and I want to talk about the traffic. And just because I live on East Powell, that road is very, very busy, and yes, we've widened it, but I also want to think about the children that are going to school. I have seen but, cars blow by our buses all the time on East Powell, and if we're putting in apartments and everything else, then our kids need to get to school and be safe to get on those buses. And I know it's not, the morning would be fine, it'd be in the afternoons when there's just more traffic and there's high school kids in the more traffic. So, that is my concern. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Tom Enning, thirty-six fifty-seven Pine Ridge Drive, Lewis Center. Agree with everything that was said. I don't think, or, I don't think the location that's being proposed is a good location. I don't, I don't want to see it as experiment, especially on my property values. I've been a resident, my current location, the address I just gave you, for twenty-five years. Again, seen lots of changes. First time I've ever came to a zoning commission, zoning meeting like this. But I urge you as a resident of Lewis Center to not approve it. I think it's a bad move for the community. I think it's a bad move for, potentially for our house, housing values and potential resale. So, again, I agree with everything that's said, just wanted to add a few things.
Good evening. My name is Aaron Underhill. I'm a zoning attorney, and I represent the landowner that is in contract to sell the property, and they are associated with ERP properties out of Kansas City, and so I'm here in their stead tonight. We obviously are speaking in support of this. We have a transaction pending with, with the end user. I wanted to point out that not only does my client own this property, but does own several other properties in the area, and so is an interested property owner, and gave consideration to all of the issues that are being discussed tonight themselves. I particularly own the Creme de la Creme, pretty significant preschool and daycare over at Africa Road in Polaris, also own the Cinemark Theater. So, they have made consideration of many of the issues that you've, you've been discussing this evening, and they do have a vested interest in the community as well. I wanted you to know that they're supportive of this, and in particular, this user and all of the, the first-class amenities that are associated with this, as well as all of security features, and feel very confident that it will be a great addition to the community. Appreciate you taking my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak before the commission?
I'll use microphones, a lot of us seem to be scared of it. Y'all ought to learn to use those when you get our hair back there when you have meetings. Michael Corey, three two four one East Powell Road. I'm not for it or against it, I just think that it's a business. They're, if they don't sell it on that corner, they're going to sell it somewhere else. I don't smoke, I don't do drugs, never have. I'm going to one of these days. I retired, so now I'm going to try it. I thought maybe we could see some free samples tonight, that's what I came for. But I have kids, I have a son who probably does more than I'd like for him to do. It's just the fact that it sounds to me like it's going to be regulated, it's going to be watched. The only, yeah, the egress and regress sucks right there, it's going to be even worse. I'm just down on the other side of Bell Canyon. We already had mothers pulling out with kids in the backseat on their cell phone when you have the daycare, that was, that was a nightmare. So, people can go across the street and drink and pull out on the road and drive home, but a person can't go inside. I don't know, know nothing about this stuff. My wife doesn't, I don't. But, um, so we got these little gummies in a little jar, and they can get them in their car. I figure most people are probably going to get in their car and go home. We can assume some of these things, that they aren't going to sit in a parking lot and get high. Let them build it, for God's sake. It's going to bring tax money, it's going to bring, that place was nothing but an eyesore until the daycare came in there. Then they built the road around it. There's going to be good and bad about it. Law enforcement is going to be your problem. Westerville will want nothing to do with it. We're in the bowels of Delaware County, that's where you are. You're the, actually the bowel of it. The sheriff has nothing to do with it down there. They only come down when they have to, then they call the high patrol, because seven fifty is by the, has high patrol. So, you got to think about that. Better have a, a speed dial for somebody that's going to come and help you, because they're going to either fight to get out of it or fight just because they want the recognition. That's all Westerville will be there for. So, you guess the regress, and, you know, I just think that if someone's going to do it here, if they don't do it here, for all, they're going to do it somewhere else. That's all there is to it. It's, it's allowed, it's going to happen, we're going to have two of them eventually. For God's sake, put it somewhere where we know we have secure, a secure place. It's not a food vendor pulling up in a truck, selling this stuff out of the back of a truck, okay? It's not a street vendor, it's a legitimate business because people voted to have this in. I didn't like it, I voted no. But when I start talking about business and growth, it seems like everybody's against that. What we have to have is responsible adults and parents. My biggest concern is the irresponsible parents who are saying, yeah, and they voted for it, where I have our kids, I got thirteen or ten, I don't know what they are, nine-year-old grandkids. But what I, my concern is, their dad does, I'm afraid they're going to leave it somewhere where the kids can get to it. That's, 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 that's adulthood. It's parenting, and it's going to be, it's up to those, it's those people responsible to take care and take responsibility for our youth. Don't worry about the kids, let the parents worry about them. Thank you.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak? Because I'd like to close discussion in like the next five minutes, so the commission can get a chance to discuss issues.
Hi, I'm Christine Brill, thirty-two sixteen East Powell Road, across from Mr. Corey. I'm actually against this proposal. It has really very little to do with what they're selling, even though I voted no for that. It has more to do with the fact that I've lived at thirty-two sixteen East Powell Road for twenty years, and in that twenty years, we have been squeezed. We ended up, we had, when I first moved into our area, we're at the intersection of Powell Road and Colonial Meadows, our road backed up to an amphitheater, and there were two residential houses at the end of it. Those are now gone, and there's a big blue box store there. So, we no longer have woods, we have a big blue box store in our backyard. Now, we're going to ask to have more retail at the end of our road, which is squeezing us even more. And I feel like the southern edge of Orange Township is being forgotten. We've had our road enlarged, and in that process, we were told we would get bike and walking paths, but we're still waiting for those to help those children get to school and to be able to maybe walk back and forth safely. So... So this is just another thing that is squeezing our residential area. We're all zoned FR1, with the exception of Hickory Ridge, and we're wanting to put retail at the end of our road. Also, there's another dispensary going in at the other end of Powell Road, at, right behind Speedway. There is going to be another dispensary. Don't understand why we need two within two miles. And also, on 23, we're supposed to have business overlay. That seems like the right location if you want to put not on Powell Road.
But I don't know if that's Orange Township or not. Are there any more comments from the public?
Hi. Molly Watts, 5571 Villa El Vito. I'm actually in Genoa Township, the township right across the street. And I would like to echo what she was just saying, because it just seems, I used to be in Orange. That little corner is just a forgotten area that we just keep throwing things into, and already the traffic right through there, at that time of day, and we were talking about peak times, four to seven PM, and the traffic coming through there in the two lanes, and everybody trying to turn, let alone the distillery and what that's going to do to traffic. But when I, when I think about this, and I think about property values, and I've been talking to various real estate agent friends of mine, some of whom live in Michigan, Las Vegas, places where there are commonly dispensaries already, they've been there for a little while, and the property values do go down. Maybe it's 3%, maybe it's 2%, whatever. But I live farther down Worthington Road, and I'm thinking, I'm going to have to drive by here, I'm going to have to sell my house at some point in the future, and I'm going to have to drive by yet another something, a retail spot, that just seems so awkwardly placed to have retail in the middle of all of that. And I've heard that maybe somebody wanted a gas station on the other side of the road. But it just seems the wrong place, and with Orange Township being as big as it is, all the way over to 23, why this little spot? Why this little corner? And why not all of these other places that are far away from residents, far away from churches, far away from children, that seem much more appropriate? So I echo what a lot of the other folks were saying. It just seems the wrong place. I think it's fine if Orange voted to have it, I just think it's a very, it's not the right spot.
Thank you.
My name is Fran Myers. I live at 5570 Worthington Road, down the street. We just built a house on Worthington Road this past year, and I love the community feel there. I feel like this will take away from that aesthetic that we have there. If there's better uses, maybe putting something like Westerville did at the corner of Africa with their walking park, something like that would be a much better use for a place where you have houses lined up side by side would be a much better use than turning into commercial whatsoever. I do commercial real estate, and we're required to put parks in all the time when we do stuff. Maybe that's something that the township should think about.
Is there anybody else? This could be the last speaker? So we can move things along, because it's getting late?
Ryan Whitehead. I'm not a resident, but live up Worthington. This is an area where my kids drive past every day, because they have a stop along the way to go to Orange High School that they go to in the morning on Powell Road. It's a place that every evening and morning I commute to. I don't know that people are thinking about the ramifications of the fact that the north end cannot get down to I-71 without going past this intersection. I have a feeling the developer has thought about that, and that might be part of the reason that he would like that property. I think that when you think about the rush hour traffic that we've experienced, the continued growth between those peak hours of four to seven, and the fact that there's no interchange planned yet for the northern end, we're actually putting a fair amount of traffic that's going to have to go through there. And as you have returned to office with Chase, for example, that has 10,000 employees at Polaris, what we've been experiencing for the last five years is not what we're going to experience for the next future, due to the fact that you have thousands of employees who, for 40% of the time, have not been going into the office on that road, and it's already congested both ways in the morning and the evenings. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Does the commission have any comments? Dennis? No? Pam?
Nothing. I asked mine already.
Okay. Carthick?
Just one question. Is there a required green space for, and do they meet this criteria?
So the requirements of the Plain Commercial District are that 75% is the maximum hardscape, so 25% of the site has to be green space or permeable surfaces. There's not specific landscape requirements in terms of there's, you know, there's these number of trees that need to be planted, types of trees, shrubs, things like that, that this Plain District does not have those requirements.
Les, do you have any other comments?
Comment or question?
Both.
No additional questions. I guess my vote will just speak for itself at the end of the day. Yeah.
Okay. I just have a couple of comments. A lot of them are, I don't know how this vote's going to go, but if we move forward, there are a couple of things in the application. I know Robin has already laid some out, but I would suggest that we consider restricting the neighboring use for the office and commercial, if this is approved, for building BNC, to make sure that the list of adult uses, pawn shops, whatever, be applicable to this site. I do not want to see, if this is approved, that this area becomes a LaZelle Road. I'll just leave it at that. The other thing, there were a lot of divergences requested. Usually if, in my opinion, if something is hotly contested and has a lot of divergences that the applicant worked to remove as many of those divergences as possible. Some of them are understandable for the existing buildings. You can't pick them up and move them based on, you know, setbacks and things of that nature from when they were built, for example, the cell tower buildings. However, I would encourage that the new buildings do as much as possible try to sit within our code, so we don't have those divergences. Like I said, some you could, you know, work on, some are pre-existing, that isn't, can't do a lot. The other issue that Robin brought up is the lighting plan. It was, I don't know if you could provide a blow-up or something, but it's very difficult for us to see what those other metrics are. So if the application does move forward, I would encourage that there's clarity in terms of light trespass on the neighbors in that area. What was that?
It's on there. It's already ready.
The only thing that's not on there is to restrict the neighborhood.
Okay. So I would restrict the neighborhood use. I also agree to the waiver. I would also suggest that you label your setbacks on your site plans. Granted, my eyesight's not that good anymore, that's why I wear glasses, but I had trouble seeing what the setbacks were, where your proposed building was going to go. So both, I guess, code setbacks and proposed setbacks of how they would vary from the code, if you are requesting a divergence, would be helpful. And then where you're thinking that this building C might go as well on that site plan. I know it's not there currently, but it looks like there's an area that has been set aside for that. So, yes, some of them have already, are already on this list, and I would suggest, if this does move forward, to work on your application.
Yeah.
Does anybody else on the commission have any thoughts?
Yeah, no, just for the record, I, you know, I appreciate the applicant and, as a supporter of the amendment that passed, my biggest concern is the resident distance, and certainly we need the additional tax money and that sort of thing. And I think the other places and spaces that is, that can be found than the current spot right now. And so, and I'm sure you searched, I'm sure you searched, but, yeah, so, I like your facility, I like what you're doing, but I think my vote is going to ultimately be no.
Is there any other comments from the commission?
Thank you, Mr. Geiger. The trustees needed to, need to hear what you had to give us this evening.
Yeah. I agree.
So then can someone on the commission come forward with a motion?
I'll be happy to. Give my motion of denial.
That wasn't my motion. My, I recommend approval with modifications of zoning application, zone number 24-09 of Ohio Patient Access LLC. Motion by Pamela Foster to recommend to the Board of Township Trustees, the board, the approval of this modification of the zoning application, zone number 24-09 of Ohio Patient Access LLC, the pages of which are each stamped, "Received with Orange Township zoning on 12/13/24," requesting amendment of the currently effective development plan for property owned by Early Childhood Education LLC, application number 070714. Upon finding that this is the interest of the public convenience, comfort, prosperity, or general welfare, or sufficiently in accordance with the comprehensive plan and including additional modifications listed below. They are, number one, the applicant shall resubmit a lighting plan acceptable to the zoning director at least 10 days prior to the hearing of the Board of Trustees, or remove the language regarding the lighting plan, shall override the requirements of Article 21. Number two, the applicant shall provide either a list of specific permitted and/or prohibited uses to the zoning director at least 10 days prior to the hearing of the Board of Trustees. Number three, the applicant shall remove language relating to a 10% waiver of development standards by the zoning inspector. And number four, restrict the, include the restrictive neighboring use of the buildings on that property.
Do you want to add the restrictions, auto-oriented and all that?
Well, I did the restrictions that were in the motion. You have additional restrictions?
No, the restricting neighborhood.
I did it, I did it, but I didn't do all the dots. I did.
Does that, is that clear enough, Robin?
Yes, I have direction.
Okay. And I might also add that in addition to the lighting plan being modified, if you can modify the site plan, so the trustees clearly understand what the current and proposed setbacks are. And before we go to, does the applicant agree with these provisions?
Yeah, just to make sure that I understand the provisions, it would be the prohibited, list of prohibited uses, absolutely fine.
Correct.
And I understood and appreciate your comment about maybe not asking for as many variances or things, particularly on how the test issues, so I understood and I appreciate your attention.
Okay. And then just put that in your site plan proposal, whatever that goes to the trustees. Just, yes?
Great. I agree.
Okay. So, Robin, do you have your direction?
Okay. So just as a matter of technicality, since Ms. Foster made the motion, so we have the three conditions regarding the lighting plan, the list of specific permitted and prohibited uses, adding the second one for, clearing up that those are for the neighboring buildings as well, the removal of the language of development standards, and then resubmitting a site plan with setbacks. Those are the five modifications. Okay. Motion made by Ms. Foster. Is there a second?
Do you have a second?
Motion seconded.
Those voting, Mr. Bellis?
I will say yes with concerns.
Mr. Pierce?
No.
Mr. Avada Nura?
Yes.
Ms. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. McNulty?
No.
Motion carries with a 3-2 vote. That is a approval with modifications, recommended approval with modifications. So everyone is aware of the process. This is a recommending vote. The matter will now proceed to the Board of Township Trustees of Orange Township. They will schedule a public hearing, similar format to this one. That will probably be scheduled for somewhere mid-February. Once that date is set, we will post that on our website, Facebook. Feel free to get in touch with me at the zoning department, phone call, email, whatever works. And we will let nearby residents know through USPS as well.
And I would suggest also that since this is now going to be for trustees, what we have done here is made a recommendation. The trustees will have the final vote. So if there are any concerned residents, please reach out to Robin, reach out to your trustees to voice your concerns. Thank you. Is there any other business before the commission?
I have nothing further.
All right. Well, then I hereby close the commission meeting of January 14.
Thank you.